I'd like to call the public hearing on the 2023 tax levy to order. We're going to start with the pledge, please.
The pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ginny. Would you please take your role? Collins, Coyle, Iker, Lee, Patrice, Yusuf Abramson, Owen, here. Yeah, I'll turn it over to Mary Calhoun.
Yes, tonight we are having the public hearing on the 2023 tax levy. The purpose of the public hearing is to report out on the tax levy that we are presenting for approval tonight and then to hear from any public that may have comments on the tax levy. The tentative tax levy was approved at the November 6th Board of Education meeting. We published notice of this public hearing paper on October 20th and November 22nd. The tax levy tonight is capped at 5% in our cap funds plus new growth. This year, we anticipate having more new growth than usual because we have two TIF districts that are expiring, the Buridaman property on Dempster as well as the Target property in Rosemont on Mannheim Road. This levy calls for an increase of 6.13% in the cap funds. And when you add in the debt service and the Public Act 10205-19 levy, it comes to 6.78%. We are anticipating less than that because we don't believe we'll get a full $70 million in the growth, but that is the amount of the growth we're levying for. District 207 represents about 27% of an individual homeowner's tax bill. So on a tax bill of $10,000, and I'm going to say absent the assessment, because as we saw in 2022, assessments were all over the board and kind of crazy. We estimate this increase, because it's a non-reassessment year, will be about $135 on that home. We did not levy our full capped amount last year, as the board is aware. We kept that to under a 4% increase, 3.78 to be exact. But with the high inflation that we've seen over the last several years, everything that we buy in need as a school district is going up. So that's the information on the tax levy. I'll turn it over now in case we have any public comments on the tax levy.
Okay, I do see that we have a comment, Mr. Hendricks. And we do ask that you please keep your comments to three minutes. We'll give you a notice when you're getting close.
My name is Michael Hendricks. I'm a president of Maine Township, attended public schools in Maine Township from 1958 to 1971. So I have a long-term perspective on the township. And my parents and I, my parents died many years ago, but we've paid property taxes every year since 1955 to Maine Township. I read that the levy would be increased over 55%, and I object as a taxpayer. In Barrow Ridge, the median property tax bill jumped 17% 2023 versus 2022. Mine jumped 24%. I read in Kiplingers that the state of Illinois is one of the most tax-free family states in the nation for the middle class, based on income taxes plus property taxes plus sales taxes. I also read that the average homeowner in Illinois, or the average household in Illinois, owes $40,000 in unfunded pension liabilities, public pension liabilities. So, you know, I object. I encourage you to vote no. As a side note, you know, I spent 39 years in corporate America. I grossly underestimated the viciousness and the ruthlessness and the instability in the private sector. I worked for one company for 19 years, and new owners came in and canceled our pension program on a go-forward basis. I worked for another company, new owners came in and they cut my salary by 30%. So people in the private sector, we don't have, you know, union contracts to hide behind. I'm talking about white collar workers. So I'm not the greatest speaker, but I urge you to vote no and to vote for less than 5%. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Are there any other comments right now? Okay. If there are none, we will adjourn the public. Moving on to call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Education for December 4th. Keep the heads up and roll again. Yes. Collins, Coyle, Iker, Lee, Patrice, Yusuf Abramson, Owen, here. We'll start with 207's best for the elective area of achievements. And we'll start with the technical man.
Welcome up Francisco Jimenez Serrain.
Whoop, right up here. There we go. Perfect.
Yeah, excellent. Yeah, we do need an excellent. Okay. So when Francisco told me that he wants to be a part of the force that studies the cosmos, I thought it made perfect sense because Francisco has a seemingly limitless intellectual curiosity, and that made sense that he would want to study the immensity of space. When he looks out, Francisco sees our common humanity here on Earth. He said, "People have looked up for centuries. It is the one constant thing in humanity. Earth is small, we are small. This is where everyone has ever lived, and we have to take care of it," he said. From what inspires him, you can see just about everything you want to know about this generous, well-rounded, inexhaustibly curious young man. After a freshman year spent partly learning virtually, Francisco felt dazzled by what he encountered in his sophomore year. In AP European History, he came to realize that, quote, "I could love everything here." He helped rejuvenate the math team, exploring his deep passion for the subject and, quote, "finding his people." Francisco has exhausted our in-person offerings through BC Calculus, but he has been teaching himself multivariate through Khan Academy and supplementing his study with AP Physics C and AP Statistics. "I would do this for fun," he told me. "It doesn't feel like a challenge, even though it's hard and I work at it." Math is foundational for Francisco, the basis of what he most wants to do after high school. Having accomplished so much, Francisco is still looking up, excited by what more there is to know. By no means are Francisco's interests limited to math and physics. His Spanish classes have been deeply important to him as his advanced study in school complemented his at-home language use and helped me explore what I didn't know. He has been proud to connect to the aspects of his culture as a Chilean Mexican-American and extended his studies in classroom to the dance group Latinos Unidos. "I connected to what's in me," he said, discovering steps and rhythms that were both familiar and new to him at the same time. Francisco also enthuses about his engineering capstone course, in which he has been so excited to cement his theoretical knowledge and help those concepts take shape. "I've loved bridging the gap between what we know and what we can do. Learning to weld and work with metals has enabled him to apply what he knows mathematically while cutting and curving a length of pipe to very precise specifications. In his culinary class, Francisco asks for extra recipes to try at home, hoping to accumulate more skills for the day when he will live independently. As a learner, Francisco has left no stone unturned when it comes to the curriculum we offer at Maine West. This has been intentional. After graduation, I want to look back and say I've soaked up as much as I can and not just in my chosen career," he told me. On math team, in Scholastic Bowl, or in Skills USA, Francisco supplements his coursework with extracurricular opportunities to learn. Everything Francisco does is a learning experience, even the college application process, in which he carefully has studied return on investment so that he can select the best value among the engineering schools that offer him admission. Learning isn't just what he does in school. It's who he is, and that's why his planned course of study seems perfect. Space might just be big enough to contain Francisco's innate and expansive curiosity, maybe. I can't contain all the enthusiasm that Francisco's teachers expressed about their delight in working with him, but I have put together a sampler. From Mr. Sumida in Physics, Francisco is really a joy to have as a student and an extracurricular mentee. He brings a joyous energy to everything he does, an infectious energy that helps his peers achieve even more. His intelligence is beyond amazing. He quickly understands concepts and mathematical tools and makes connections in class before just about all of his peers. A teacher is lucky when they see Francisco on their roster, and he's a terrific baker as well. Mrs. Young, who also had Francisco in Physics because he could not get enough of it, also enthused. "Francisco is one of the most positive people I have ever met. I am so happy he is being recognized. I had the great pleasure of having Francisco as a student in AP Physics I last year. Not only is he highly intelligent and hardworking, Francisco is friendly, funny, kind, and brings joy to the spaces he is in. Francisco is not deterred by a challenge, and his innate curiosity drives his work ethic. It is no surprise to me that he has earned this honor for excellence in electives. I know Francisco has a future full of recognition, and it will all be well-deserved." Senor Valanas in Spanish shared, "I had the privilege of having Francisco as a junior last year in Spanish 5 AP Language. Francisco is a great student with a wonderful personality. In class, his probing with questions showed not only a thirst for a deeper knowledge and understanding of the Spanish language and culture, but for knowledge in general. This was always accompanied by his good sense of humor and pleasant demeanor. It was an honor to have had Francisco in class." Mr. Peterson, one of Francisco's engineering teachers, pointed out that Francisco excelled in manufacturing competitions as well. "Francisco is the student who leads by example. He is positive, helpful, and always wants to go the extra mile to maximize his learning. He was awesome to have in class. He placed first last year in the TMA PMC, which is the Technology and Manufacturing Association Precision Machining Competition, in the CNC CAM Advanced Competition, earning a perfect score." Finally, from Mr. Schultes, Francisco's CAD teacher last year, "I cannot think of a more appropriate student to be recognized as one of Maine's 207's best in elective performance or academic performance in general for that matter. As I reminisce upon my time with Francisco in class last year, I recall his genuine enthusiasm for learning, his curiosity, and his drive to challenge himself to create designs using more sophisticated methods of detail that went above and beyond showing mastery of course content. Francisco regularly applied his curiosity, along with his robust understanding of geometry, to explore the boundaries of the CAD software as well as look for shortcuts to design creation. As a first-year teacher of the course, having Francisco in class was akin to having a teacher's aide. If there was an issue with the software or functionality of a tool, Francisco was on it, helping to come up with a solution. I sincerely appreciated having Francisco in class last year and can think of no more appropriate choice for Maine's 207's best. It is an honor to present Francisco Jimenez Serrain as Maine West representative for 207's best in electives. Congratulations and best wishes."
You get a little award, and while they're giving it to you, can you tell us a little bit about who's here with you tonight?
Sure. So my whole family's back there. My dad, my mom, my two brothers, and they've always been, they've always like just been an endless source of support, always like helping me challenge myself, no matter how hard it was or like how meticulous all of it was. And for that, I'm really grateful. Thank you.
Talk about the plan for next year.
So next year, I don't know where it's going to be. I have a few, I have a few ideas, maybe U of I, Purdue, maybe Illinois Tech, but wherever it is, I'm going to just like hit the ground running, got to study, got to study like the sciences of like rocket science, space science, all that. And, you know, like leaving like, leaving here is going to be hard, you know, like all my friends, you know, all my friends, teachers, the people I come to know. But I'm sure that like in the years that I, in the years are to come, I'm going to make even more friends.
We will move on now to Maine East. Dr. Pykel?
Riddy, if I can invite you to stand up here by us. Maine East 207's best for December is Riddy Patel. It has been a pleasure to get to know Riddy as her story outlines the experience that we hope for all of our District 207 students. As Riddy honed her natural academic talents and increased her confidence, she chose experiences in classes that pulled her out of her comfort zone. She credits her experiences in our elective courses as key to determining her future areas of study. At the start of high school, Riddy immersed herself in our career and technical education department as she believed her passion to be something in the business realm. She found success in accounting, intro to business, and really defined herself as a student leader in her introduction to engineering class. In that class, Riddy was able to exercise her creative problem-solving talent and develop her capacity as a leader. Mr. Gonzalez, Riddy's teacher in that course, shared that Riddy consistently stood out in class, showcasing exceptional qualities that contributed positively to the natural, to the learning environment. Starting with her innate problem-solving skills, she's a natural problem solver at heart. She approaches challenges with proactive and analytical mindset and would constantly demonstrate her ability to break down complex problems into simpler components. Riddy's leadership skills played a huge role in her group's success during the ISTC STEM Challenge. Her group was chosen as a finalist for the STEM Challenge Showcase in downtown Chicago. In this event, she presented her solution to a real-world problem, which involved the development of a platform to manage discrepancies in healthcare. Despite Riddy's success in business and engineering coursework, she remembers being captivated by the content she learned in AP World History. As she grew into her school journey, Riddy realized that she could make sense of world events because of the foundation that was laid in this course. Her lyceum courses also influenced her newfound love for understanding history, culture, and people. During her sophomore year, Riddy had a chance to dig deep into the history and complexities between Israel and Palestine, which furthered her interest in international relations. Similarly, her Spanish 4 learning experience was filled with culture and history. This course is one that Riddy now regards as a favorite. This learning journey led to an obvious conclusion when Riddy got to travel with her lyceum group to a service trip in Detroit. She loved learning about the impact of the Depression and the movement of people over time. These combined experiences clarified for Riddy that while she loved most of her classes, her passion really centers around history and international relations. She's continued to succeed in elective courses that contribute to her learning in this area, including AP European History, AP Spanish, AP Micro-Macroeconomics, and AP Government. Riddy's elective experiences have been so impactful in shaping her future path that she's also learned one of the most important lessons, that it's critical to try new things, even when you don't think they'll lead to a future connection. Riddy demonstrated this by engaging in a ceramics and design course this year. As you'd expect, Riddy's teachers recognize and appreciate her talents as a student. Mr. Centato shared that Riddy is an example of hard work, dedication, and excellence. "When she started with me, she struggled, but instead of giving up, she really upped her game, and I was thrilled to have her back this year. Riddy never cuts corners, she never complains, and she ended up as one of my success stories. I'm thrilled to have her back in Spanish 5 this year." Ms. LaHart shared that Riddy's problem-solving skills and creativity, combined with her curiosity and confidence working with new media, consistently shows up in ceramics and design. Her ceramic work was highlighted in my Instagram Artwork of the Week recently, as she took the design and texture on her pinch pot to new levels. "Riddy is independent in her discovery process and continues to impress me with the solutions she presents for each project I propose." Mr. Peter shared that Riddy is just as terrific a student as a person. "From her sophomore year in AP Euro to this year in AP United States Government and Politics, I've seen tremendous growth in Riddy as a student. She's much more confident in her abilities and thus more willing to share her thoughts in class discussions. In addition, she's meticulous in her preparation for class and constantly produces some of the best work in the class. This summer, I got to see Riddy outside of the classroom on our lyceum trip to Detroit. While she is more of a quiet presence in the classroom, outside, she's a vocal leader who encourages her classmates and holds them accountable to high standards. It was clear that Riddy is passionate about serving others and making the community a better place for all." Lastly, Riddy's lyceum sponsor, Mr. Ruth, shared that working with Riddy and lyceum has been an incredible experience. "She is such a thoughtful, kind, and dedicated individual that makes everything better by her being there. She thought deeply about the ways in which our organization, the organizations that we worked with and could serve others, and reflected on how she could embody those commitments. As a student, she challenges me and other students to be the best versions of ourselves and helps create a close community amongst our group. I'm excited to see all of the great things Riddy will do after she leaves Maine East and happy I was able to be a part of it. I was impressed with Riddy's journey through the elective areas, and I loved hearing how these experiences will influence her future. However, what was equally interesting was how much Riddy pushed herself on her journey even outside of the classroom. She seems to be involved in nearly all of the activities that we offer. Most notable were her organization of a recent Garba dance for the South Asian Student Association, her leadership in student council, the Investment Foundations Club, Mental Health Awareness Club, lyceum, and our Schuler Scholars Program. Riddy even joined cheerleading for the first time ever this year as a senior. We're grateful for her ambitious and reliable leadership that Riddy has shared with Maine East over the last four years, and we anticipate much success in your future, Riddy. Congratulations."
Riddy, who's here with you tonight?
My mom is, and I'm grateful because she managed to find time.
Excellent. That's wonderful. And Riddy, what's the plan after this, after this year?
Similar to what Francisco said, I'm not sure exactly where, but I am hoping to study international affairs and public policy with specialization in conflict resolution.
Excellent.
Moving on to Maine South. Dr. Sawyer?
All right. Thank you, Olivia. If you would. On behalf of the staff of Maine South High School, we are pleased to recognize Olivia DeLuca as one of 207's best in the elective area of achievements, specifically in the area of world languages. During her time at Maine South, Olivia has cultivated her passion for language, earning the distinction of being a polyclot by taking four consecutive years of both French and Italian. Currently, she is enrolled in both AP French and AP Italian. Olivia shared that learning new languages exposes her to new cultures and experiences regarding her understanding of the world. She attributes her success in language to her aunt, who is a high school French teacher, her grandparents, who are native Italian speakers, and also to her strong relationship with Maine South Italian language teacher Christina Monica, who has been a constant in her personal and academic road. Along with AP French and AP Italian, her current courses include AP Literature and Composition, AP Calculus AP, AP Environmental Science and Law in American Society. Outside of her classes, we actually find some time, that's good. Olivia is on the varsity girls cross-country team, and I will talk about that, and the varsity girls track team. She's a member of the Italian Club, French Club, and the Science National Honor Society. To help highlight Olivia's work in electives, specifically in world languages, Tona Costello of the Department shared for world languages stated, "Olivia DeLuca is a student who has blossomed during her years at Maine South. She began with French in middle school and has continued in both French and Italian all four years. Olivia has matured from a polite but reserved student into a graceful and capable leader, advocating for her educational needs, contributing thoughtfully to class discussions, and helping others without hesitation. Olivia is the type of student who takes every opportunity to achieve in the course, completes all assignments to the best of her ability, and makes the time to try strategies that are suggested to her. She's organized, motivated, and precise. Olivia and a classmate formed an ad hoc committee and attended a board meeting last school year, so maybe you recall, to promote increased rigor in language classes and to advocate for the sustained use of the accelerated designation for students who demonstrate excellence." Laura Ortega, a world language teacher for French and Spanish, offered her perspective. "I've had the honor of instructing Olivia for her freshman year in French II Accelerated and again this year for French 5 AP. During the height of the pandemic, Olivia was one of the very few students who completely maximized the online classroom. Her camera was always on, showing her smiling face, and she did everything requested, reached out with questions, and completed all work with the utmost effort and enthusiasm. She is, this year, a powerhouse in the classroom, a dynamic and communicative classmate, and an example for all to follow." The teacher said, "I am exceedingly proud of her achievements and her work ethic. It has been a pleasure to contribute to her success." Christina Monica, an Italian teacher, as you know, right, added this about Olivia. "I have been Olivia's teacher in Italian for three years. When I met Olivia, she was a quiet, timid young girl who was unsure of her ability in Italian. Through her hard work and determination and passion, she has grown to be a young woman with a, who is proud of her Italian heritage and linguistic capabilities. Every class, Olivia brings her drive to achieve, desire to do her best, and her positive nature. In her optimistic and ever-dedicated manner, Olivia always offers an introspective viewpoint on everything and a compassionate energy to make each one of her classmates feel good about themselves, too. I am so proud of Olivia and her achievements in particular. This one as D 207's best. Olivia is truly the best, and I look forward to seeing all she does in the future." Now, outside of the language department at Maine South, Michael Vortek, Olivia's counselor, shared, "Olivia's positivity and kindness are two characteristics that define her. Every time you talk with her, she has a smile on her face and is always happy. She is the type of student you look forward to meeting with because her outlook on life is extremely positive, and she is always willing to engage in meaningful conversations and reflection. In our time meeting together about career and college planning, Olivia sought feedback and advice from staff about how to use her skills in world language towards potential career. But it's not all about the academics." The varsity cross-country coach, Jeffrey Dowell, offered this insight when working with Olivia. "I've had the pleasure of working with Olivia for all four years at Maine South in our running programs. Actually, I first met her in a summer camp prior to her freshman year. She surprised us from the beginning as an up-and-coming star at Maine South by winning her first major invite race as a freshman, and she has been a very successful, she has been very successful ever since." As far as accomplishments, Olivia has been a varsity letter winner, named all-conference by the CSL in each of four seasons in cross-country and her first three seasons in track and field. In addition, she has set some of the very best times for the various races in track and is in the top 10 best times ever run in our school history in cross-country. Yeah, as a team member, Olivia has been to the state level of competition on three occasions for cross-country as well last year for track. Besides being one of our best runners in school history, she has also been an outstanding leader in our programs. Olivia was a terrific captain of our cross-country team this fall. The other runners look up to her for guidance, moral support, and advice on how to prepare and compete at the highest level. She definitely leads by example. She trains very hard and is a fierce competitor. We look forward to her senior season in track and field and watching her lead our team in that sport as well. Overall, she has been a great asset to our program in terms of success, personality, and character, and she will be missed as she moves to the next level." And lastly, Kathleen Durkin, a social science teacher, added, "I've had the privilege of teaching Olivia in US History class and coaching her in track and field. Olivia is the type of student athlete who will always go the extra mile in both her schoolwork and in a track workout. I have seen her put forth in a tremendous amount of effort into researching a topic or studying for tests, and I have also witnessed her finish a race without nothing left in her tank to the point of collapsing. Olivia is so tough and determined, and I am so proud that she is being recognized for such a prestigious award. Overall, Olivia's commitment and dedication to world languages is evident in and out of the classroom and in her relationships with others. We have every confidence that Olivia will continue to find success in all of her future endeavors. Congratulations, Olivia."
My mom and my dad, who I'm grateful for both of them, they're very supportive in both academics and athletics.
All right. Very good. And your future?
I'm not really sure where, but I would like to study languages like linguistics and global studies, and I'd love to do a lot of traveling. I want to study abroad in college.
How exciting. Congratulations to you.
Well, congratulations to all of these wonderful students for all that we've accomplished and we're looking forward to hearing how you do in the future. Congratulations to their families who are there with them, and thank you to their teachers and their principals for nominating them and providing, taking time to provide such wonderful words of encouragement to them and, you know, enlightening us on what they're doing. This is your chance to step outside and take photos with your families and your principals, and you're free to return to the meeting if you'd like, but don't feel your hands down. Okay. I don't see any public comments right now. Ken, update?
Just want to take a moment. I had sent something out to the board this afternoon. We recognized a student last February, Wolfgang Gustafson, from Maine East High School as one of our 207's best. The other student was Francis Martinez from Elk Grove High School, but he had a displaced address, so he must have lived on the other side of Mount Prospect. So I just want to take a moment to recognize Wolfgang.
It's hard to have that news following our best. Okay, any updates from board members?
Hello. I had an honor to visit South Korea two weeks ago or so, invited from Korean government for the World Korean Prodigal Forum, and from the Midwest area, we are, myself and three, three others, so four of us were invited, total of 76 politicians from worldwide, 10 different countries. We had a very nice forum, great food, I think I gained about 10 pounds or so, but I was very excited and worthwhile. And then along with that, I had an honor to visit our MOU sister school, Taekwondo High School, met with the president, Dr. Cho Hoo, last time, we met it all, and had a tour of the school and the meeting with the leadership. And they're very excited and share a regards to everyone, and they're looking forward to having a, about 20 students are to be visiting from South Korea in January 22nd through 28th, one week. And their, their first time in the United States, very excited to learn about American culture and especially family life, looking forward to have some great experience in possibility of home staying, which Dr. Ken is really working hard to bring that opportunity because last time, students were most experienced, they remember was the homestay, stay with the American family and learning about the American culture, eating American food, and everything has been really fantastic. So hopefully, we are looking forward to having that opportunity. Along with that, when they're come, I plan to arrange a visit, helping by State Senator Laura Murphy, we are planning to visit an American manufacturing company in Schaumburg to the tour, and also visiting a Post 36, the American War Veterans Association right here, we're going to do that, and then also visiting Chicago Northeastern Illinois University to do so, too. So I'm expecting that they will have a great experience, visiting our Maine Township High School, meeting with some friends, and some of them hope to build some pen pal to be a great, building a great friendship opportunity as well. But again, the school at Taekwondo is greatly appreciated about our MOU sister school, and looking forward to continue establishing great relationship, and they did offer a opportunity for our students, if when possible, to visit Korea as well for learning experience. But just letting you know that.
Thank you, Jen. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, I just have a brief update on the superintendent research. We completed the interview process Saturday, and we will be working toward announcing a new superintendent, as originally planned, on the 20th of this month. I want to thank all the staff, administrators, students, parents, members of the community who participated in that process kind of early on Saturday, and we really appreciate their input and involvement. Okay, we'll move on to the finance committee update.
So Finance Committee was held on November 20th. Members present for myself, Dean Patterson, Shiri Yuzo, and Aarson. The meeting was called to order at 5:02 PM, and there were no public comments. One of the items we discussed was vending machines. Assistant Superintendent for Businessmen Clu updated the committee on new contract with Pepsi and Yummy Vending. Those commissions are used to reduce the summer athletic costs for students on fee waiver, waivers, and we're going to vote on that contract this evening. We also discussed cap and ground, put out an RFP, but there were no sustainable options available, so it's our first second bid, opening on November 29th, and hopefully, a recommendation will be brought to the board in December. Ms. Clu also updated us on the TIF report, and we were, we found out that two properties are expiring, the Breewin property on Dumpster and Park Ridge and the Rosemont Target Shopping Mall. These properties did not result, however, in a lot of new growth, but the district can access property taxes on the new 2023 levy. We discussed Automax. This is a cloud-based patching software used to keep servers and computers secure from viruses. Automax employs an automatic patch when an attack is present. We piloted this for a year, and we liked it, and the district would like to enter into a three-year agreement for better pricing. We also discussed school pictures. Ms. Patty Alvarez, the Director of Fiscal Services, discussed that item with us. The lowest bidder did not provide references, so the district is recommending a three-year contract to be awarded to HR Imaging. We've worked with them in the past, and we've been pleased the district received $5,000 in incentives for each school and 20% commission on all picture sales. The committee inquired about using commission for students who cannot afford to buy pictures, and the district's going to look into that. We also discussed flowers and graduate gifts for graduation. The district has used an investment group for graduation flowers and gifts for the past several years and has been happy. Recommendation is to approve a three-year contract, which includes a guaranteed minimum $5,000 yearly commission for each school. The commission goes directly back to help our students. We discussed the InfoTech settlement. The district is requesting a settlement agreement with InfoTech Research to split the amount owed for the second year of two-year subscription, which the district no longer needs. This has been attorney reviewed, and the amount of $11,773.3 settles all claims owed and saves the district that amount. We discussed Zendesk. The technology department would like to renew the Zendesk agreement for one year at a cost of $29,638.16. Zendesk is our current program for ticketing and distribution of tech issues getting routed for appropriate support. This is a 10% increase over last year, and if there should be similar increases next year, the district will walk with it. The final item we discussed was the 22 Property Tax Assessment and Bills. The board received an analysis of the 2022 Property Tax Bills in Friday notes. 30.1% average increase is the largest in residential assessments in many years, with the single largest factor increasing an individual tax bill being the assessment. Maine Township D 207 is among the lowest recipients on the tax bill. The meeting was adjourned at 5:25.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have the Buildings and Grounds Committee update. November Collins is not in attendance today. I'm happy to read the report, unless you want to do it.
No, you go ahead.
Okay. The meeting was called to order at 5:26. There were no public comments. The Director of Building and Grounds, Mr. Daybo, gave a background on the bidding for roofing and tuck pointing. The district opened bids on that on November 28th, I'm guessing, and are going to present a recommendation for approval tonight. Two and a half million has been budgeted and discussed under summer projects. This earlier timeline should provide a good pool of bidders and allow the district to have contacts, contracts in place early for next summer's work. The next thing following was a five-year facility plan timeline. The district is in the process of developing the plan for the next five years of the master facilities projects. Many of these items were identified in the referendum process but were put off for budgetary reasons or priority constraints. The priority is hiring a security consultant, and the district will put out an RFP in December, present the results in January to the Buildings and Grounds Committee, and bring a recommendation to the board for approval in February. The security consultant will conduct site visits and reviews. The district is hopeful that this assessment will be performed by the end of the school year, there being no further business. The meeting was adjourned at 5:38 PM. Okay, we'll move on to monthly status of finances.
In your board packet is the October financial statement. On the revenue side, you can see minimal revenue, and that's because property tax bills aren't due, weren't due until December 1st, so until those come out, you're not going to see any really jump in revenue. As you look on the expenditure side, expenditures are in line with previous years and in line with budgets. The only two areas where you see a significant portion of the budget already spent are in capital projects and health life safety, and those are for summer projects, which explains why those are more expended as compared to budget. Everything else is in line with the budget and tracking as planned. I will entertain any questions that anybody has on the October financial reports.
Okay, I see no questions. Okay, thank you very much, Mary. We'll move on to instructional services. Dr. Lesper, we have a report today.
We have a short report each year. We like to focus on the school report card and some highlights of that report card to help create some understanding around the board about what those numbers mean, and also talk a little bit about how we go about looking to the future and addressing some of the issues that we might have identified. I'm pointing, all right, oh, wait, it would help if I turned this. There we go. So this is a reminder of how the report card is formulated. If you look here, you can see that the academic indicators are, basically account for 75% of the report card rating, and 25% is about school quality and student success indicators. You can see under there where the academic indicators are. Most familiar to us are the SAT, which are numbers one and number two, the Illinois Science Exam, which is number three. Number four is the graduation rate, which is the largest swath of the percentage of the score, and English Leonard Progress to Proficiency. And then if you look at the quality of student success, quality indicators in student success, you can see chronic absenteeism, completion of the climate survey, and ninth graders on track to graduate. You can see the largest weights given, the graduation rate, combined SAT, and chronic absenteeism. We'll talk about those in a couple of slides. Again, the schools, all three, were rated as commendable, that's for the fourth year straight, and our graduation rate this year was 92%. You can see this date graduation rate is 87.6. We are still slightly above the state average in chronic absenteeism. That is a national problem as well as a state problem. We continue, and you'll see, to put effort into ensuring that our students get to school. But when we talk about chronic absence, we're talking about students who miss 10% or more, so roughly 18 days or more of school, without a valid excuse, with or without a valid excuse. So that means even if we have students who aren't legitimately missing school, that still counts in this number. Evidence-based reading and writing, you can see there's a trend here since 2017. We have been roughly steady since 2021. 2020 is missing, is that sort of an anomaly year, the students didn't take that until they were seniors and took the test in the fall. So we typically don't look at 2020, the pandemic year. You can see that has been roughly steady at 39.8% of our students either meeting or exceeding. In terms of mathematics, we had a nice bump last year, and we're looking into why we sort of returned back down to 2021 levels this year. Could be a cohort issue. We are continuing to look at curriculum though to ensure that it's nothing that we're missing or not supporting students around. Science proficiency, we are at our highest district average ever at 71%, which is substantially higher than the state, and even with some of our local comparable districts, we fare very well on this indicator. Ninth graders on track, this is probably our biggest point of pride, looking at last year's number. We had 96% of our freshmen on track to graduation. That's significantly higher than we've, we've had before. You can see at that point, again, 20, 2020 is an anomaly, so removing that, you can see we're typically between 90 and 92%. We, as with our ninth graders from last year, are at 96% on track to graduate. Just to point out a little bit of the demographics involved here, again, as a point of pride, you can see, if you look at the demographics, we're white students, black students, and white students and Hispanic students, we considerably closed the gap on being on track for graduation. We continue, we need to do a little bit better, we need to get everyone back to, up to where we would like to be, but we have made some real progress in that area with some of our student populations. The other piece there, I'll continue to call this a little bit of a new data because this is real-time data as opposed to what we had last year for the Equity Journey Continuum. We actually took a little bit of a step back regarding the percentage of students, when we look at student learning, learning condition, and evaluating educators, or I'm sorry, elevating educators. But what we dig into, dug into the data, what we found was, the 2019 data that we presented last year had some missing data that was not in the report, which artificially inflated our numbers. So this is a better look at perhaps what the baseline is as we put in our efforts in equity. But just so you know how they count each of these areas, student learning is calculated by the four-year graduation rate, learning conditions is about student-parent-teacher five essentials completion. For example, Maine South, I'll just share this information, if 2.9% more of our students took the five essentials, they would have been an exemplary school this year. So something that's very doable to move that number, but as I said, it's completion. So it's just about getting students to follow through with that. Elevating educators, teacher-student demographic ratio. As you know, we've put forth an effort to hire, seek out, attract, and hire teachers and administrators of color that look more like our students. And so as you can see, that's where we have our minimal gap between the number of our students of our varying demographic groups and those who we employ. So tracking equity locally, the other thing that we're doing to ensure we move numbers in all of our categories is to, in addition to the Equity Journey Continuum information, we have a dashboard we've created that looks at, for all of our demographic groups, free reduced, multilingual, IEP status, those particular indicators. AP and dual credit enrollment, which we've done a really nice job of reducing that disparity between our students of color, students with IEPs in, being represented in those classes. But we also look at star reading growth trends, grade distributions, student competency and well-being, and we take that information from the Panorama Survey, so feelings of belonging, behavior incidents, and then staff participation in our equity professional development. So we are internally tracking all of those matrices to determine whether or not there are some areas that we can address to help move those numbers along for our, for our Just to give you a little bit of background and context for the SAT scores, folks always sort of look at that, it's familiar, they know, they're always sort of looking at the percentage of students who are meeting or exceeding. Just to give a little bit of a background on the challenges that we've had, really looking at long-term trends, if you look at 2001 through 2014, you'll remember, we used to have the ACT. So that data has some comparable status with SAT, but still different tests. Then in 2015, 2016, if you remember, during this time period, we had the PARC exam, probably the biggest, the most interesting thing about the PARC exam was the number of parents who wanted to opt their child out of that test at that point. Then they brought on the SAT. So from 2017 to 2019, we have some pretty solid SAT performance data. 2020, again, it's an anomaly, it's seniors, they usually would have taken it in the spring as a junior, but because of the pandemic, they took it in the fall of that year. So a little bit more learning was able to occur between the time the students were normally going to take the test and when they actually took it. That was an October test, if I remember the time of year correctly. Then we had the full SAT again, so 21, 22, and 23, and now this year, we will have the digital SAT. The reason I point that out is it's 2020, again, it's an anomaly, it's seniors, they usually would have taken it in the spring as a junior, but because of the pandemic, they took it in the fall of that year. So a little bit more learning was able to occur between the time the students were normally going to take the test and when they actually took it. That was an October test, if I remember the time of year correctly. Then we had the full SAT again, so 21, 22, and 23, and now this year we will have the digital SAT. The reason I point that out is it's not just like taking the written test and putting it into a digital format. The test has actually changed again. So there will be some issue with us, with our long-term longitudinal data, to sort of suss out how much of the new design is or is not impacting what student performance looks like on that test.
Will it, will it actually, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but will it actually modify as students are answering questions?
It does not do that, but the questions are different. So for example, it was not uncommon, and you may even remember this, to read a very large passage and then have five, six, seven, eight answers, or questions about that passage. Those passages are now like one to two paragraphs long with only one or two questions directly related to that paragraph, or those paragraphs. So it is a different construct of the test, not just as simple as taking one format and putting it into a digital format for students, which is why it'll be a little bit tricky to think about our longitudinal success or challenges on that test. And just a reminder, ISBE standards are higher than college boards, so you can look at ISBE's meet and exceed standards and college board what they consider a successful score on their tests.
Can we say since SAT is, we are relying less of SAT in the near future, will this be testing paradigm will be shift or change based on, would you say?
Well, that's a really good question. The reason that it's, it used to be pretty much all of what we met, to say whether a school was being successful or not. I think what we found out, and through research, about the validity of the SAT and its connection to college success, as well as schools shifting away from being test optional and not relying as much on acceptance as an SAT score, that that's why we're seeing it count less. We would love, I'm going to show you what we would love to see it go to. I know Dr. Wallace has had some conversations with current state superintendents regarding some of the metrics that we find are a better indicator of our students' post-secondary success. We'll talk about those in a minute. If you change and you look at the college board, college-ready standards, the schools go up by about 3% at East and West and about 5% at South. So the performance on the actual indicators of college board does raise our number of students who are meeting. But the thing that we've looked at, the thing that we really believe in and will kind of draw the correlation to is using the redefining ready data. As you can see, college readiness using these indicators are GPA of 2.8 out of 4.0 and one or more of the following academic indicators. So you can see AP is represented, the exam and the score of the course, dual-credit English or math and the success rates there, college development or medial English or math, scores of A, B, and C, and Math II scoring a score of A, B, or C. When we look at those numbers for the district, they look more like what our long-term National Clearinghouse data looks like. And so when you look at those percentages of 57, 82, 58, and then 67 overall, they correlate with what we see with students completing college. So those indicators and the percentage of our students who are ready for college as a result of those indicators, and then, as you can see, correlates well with 69.6%, which is the percentage of our students who are completing a college degree. And again, I'll remind you, it's within six years, another factor we're trying to reduce for students if that happens, that they get their degrees prior to the six-year mark. So what actions are we taking? Couple of things we've done, more accurate placement of students into MTSS interventions. We continue to hone with, hone how students get in and really focus on how students get out of those interventions. We add an MTSS coordinator in each building, so now we have a bit of an MTSS district team, which can help the buildings address specific, building-specific issues as well as sort of common things that we see happening at all three of the buildings. We've increased our attendance initiatives and oversight in all three buildings. So we saw a nice rise at West after their On Time Every Time campaign that they had. So those things do work. Something that we're working on right now is a one pager that would go out to all families as a progress report with very clear, sort of, this is what our goal is for attendance, this is where your child is, this is what the grades are, and so just trying to bring more awareness to our families about the importance of coming to school. We hired a director of multilingual learning. You've seen some of the impacts of that in terms of getting ready to implement those changes for next year, and some of the conversations we've had this year, and then increasing access to the higher level, the highest level of academic courses in the district for a greater number of students. Always trying to push students to their highest level of ability and achievement because believing you can do it and then actually seeing yourself do it raises the expectations a student has for their own success. And there's plenty of research to show that once you taste success in something that is deemed rigorous, you continue to engage in those types of course, those types of classes. So. Be happy to answer any questions you want to ask.
So how do we, community or parents compare this district school report per se from other neighborhoods, school or third community school, where we stand, our district stand? Can we really compare to see, oh, our district bringing a fantastic job compared to other neighborhood or community school?
Well, I think if you look at the report cards and you take a look and see what schools fall into the commendable range, what schools might fall into an exemplary range, that really gives you a sense of how we are performing in comparison to other districts around us.
But at the same time, this is not really, this is not really a comparison to nation, national level, right? They are all different.
No, each state is different in how they, how they've met the requirements of ESSF, which is the national, from the Department of Education, guidelines for achievement in schools.
So I had a couple of questions. So under the, your slide about college readiness by academic indicators, are those criteria that are listed, are those something that a state puts out that they believe are good indicators?
These? Actually, these were originated in District 214. Dave Schuler, who was the former superintendent of District 214, did some research with the students in that district and looked at some things longitudinally, also with national research. And they are, a few years ago, I can't remember how many years ago, we signed on to an agreement that we felt that these were important indicators to continue to.
We did that as a board.
Yes, as a board. I can't remember how many years, it was quite a few years now.
I actually, I actually worked with David on the original draft of this. It originally said a GPA of 2.8 out of four and one of the following academic indicators I actually recommended to change it to one or more of it. So that changed, I was there when they were doing the beta, Law's helped on this. They went to a conference and looked at some of the GPA, the actual GPA number was 2.7. They ended up, for political reasons, making it 2.8. But yeah, that was probably 10 years ago.
Yeah, it's been, it's been a while. I was here, but I know it's been a while since we had that conversation.
But Sean mentioned it, but if you look at the SAT cuts, we increased, on paper, college readiness, 11% in State of Illinois for no other reason than changing from the ACT to the SAT. Neither of, both of these tests have the same flaw, and that is that they greatly represent college readiness. So Sean's pointing to the college, to the National Clearinghouse data, which is actual record of student completion of college over time, is a much more reliable measure, and it does, does measure up to the multiple measures. The current state superintendent, I think, is of a mind, if he could pull it off, hopefully politically, he would change at a minimum to the regular SAT-recommended cuts, even though they're too high, at least that would more accurately reflect the readiness of students in Illinois. And the other thing that Illinois is open to is piloting alternative academic measures, similar to redefine ready, for example, or other tests. And wait, one more thing, I just, it just dawned on me, we know the president of the State Board of Education really, really well. In fact, he's sitting here in that room tonight, and we might be able to lobby him on some of these details, too. So anyway.
Yeah, and I'm just going to mention, metrics like these align with the other metrics that the state has developed, particularly in sort of the career college-ready area, where it's sort of, there's multiple ways to show that a student is ready. And that's what's nice about this, is it doesn't just lie on an old standardized test that says, well, you have X score, so then therefore you're, you know, likely to get a C. And actually, that data is misleading as well. Scores on the SAT or exams like that really only account for about 25% of predicted success in college. So it's not a large percentage that that number actually relates, that can be correlated to a student's college success.
Can you, I'm sorry, one second. Can you, can you explain the chronic, or not the chronic, the climate survey portion of this?
Yeah.
Just having that completed goes into this, and what is the thinking behind that?
So I'm not sure about just having it completed. I think it's about, I think what they're trying to do, and Steve, feel free to jump in if you have some insight in baseball, but I think what the state is trying to do is talk about engagement with your community. So the fact that you're engaging with the community, you're asking their opinion, they're giving you feedback, is what I believe the state is really trying to emphasize in that category. And we use two. So we take into account the five essentials, but then we also give the panorama twice a year, which are as more specific to the data we're really trying to gather in our own buildings. So we try and, we try and get those kids in advisory, and we try and make sure they take that five essentials. But I'll be honest with you, if a student's not there, odds of them going back, if they miss that advisory, for example, odds of them going back and completing the five essentials is pretty slim.
And you're also really digging on the absenteeism in that case, right?
Yeah.
So just on that, just really quickly, so we're just slightly above the state average, and that doesn't, does that concern you? And what are the reasons for absenteeism? I mean, I know our broad reasons, but we've talked about transportation, like specifically to our district, what are we doing to kind of improve?
Sure, I mean, I can have the building speak to what they're doing in terms of encouraging attendance, but overall, we're trying to really talk about attendance. I don't think we did a lot of talking about attendance pre-pandemic, numbers were pretty good, but to be honest with you, three years before the pandemic, we started to see the attendance problem. I'm doing this because attendance was going down, but that, it started way back then. The pandemic exacerbated it for a lot of different reasons. But I'll, if you'd like to add anything about the things you're doing specifically in your buildings.
Sure.
So, I mean, you've heard a lot about the On Time Every Time, which is, you know, sounds kind of gimmicky, but it's sticky, so we'll take it. But that's really just the tip of the iceberg. More importantly, we have some interventions like a check-in, check-out, we have where kids who reach a certain tier based on their percentage of absences go into a program where they have a check-in on their attendance once a week, you know, at the beginning and the end of the week, so twice a week. We have some after-school interventions, we call them absence and target turnarounds. So students who have hit a certain threshold go in, and it's really more instructional than a typical detention may have been. They do a little problem solving, they work through a process, they examine what are the underlying causes for their absences. When they speak with their counselor or their assistant principal when they first kind of hit that part of the pyramid, they have a conversation about what are the implications of some of these numbers, like why do we see you missing first and second periods, so the first period of every day? And we find out the reason, and sometimes we can intervene on the reason, sometimes we can't. And then this year, our assistant principals and our associate principal for Student and Family Services preemptively did a 30-day initiative for the kids who are in the highest tier of chronic absenteeism last year. And we started with them before school even began, with a family meeting, a conference, and then they had weekly check-ins, they had someone in the, in the building who was regularly monitoring them. Sometimes we have kids escorted to class. So all of that means, like, I know the numbers look a little alarming because we are above the state average, but at West, we reduced our chronic absenteeism by 21%. So that's an improvement that we think is not nearly enough, so we are coming up with more.
And your start-of-the-year initiative had a high success rate.
Oh my gosh, yeah. About 80% of the kids we were trying to reach participated, and about 68% of them achieved serious gains. That's a really notable improvement. And they've sustained it even though we're not doing it anymore. I mean, we check in with them periodically, but.
They have just been really showing how much we care.
And honestly, I think so. I mean, the fact that when we, our first question is, hey, are you okay, versus where have you been? It makes a little more.
It's a big difference.
Some of the things that Eileen mentioned are similar at East in that our, I think all of our interventions have become much more proactive-focused and much more about the relationships with our students. I would say specifically, our alternative learning environment has kind of been transformed into a place where students have nonstop contact with a caring adult, whether it be their student services personnel checking in with them, or the teaching assistant that we have in that room has been given tools to help the processing conversations about how do we make sure this is the best place for you day to day when there's concerns about chronic absenteeism. At East, I would say our most significant challenge is that when we consider our immigrant refugee families, our multilingual learners, if a student is a translator for their family, let's say, or the only transportation provider, we lose every time. So East's conversation is much more about what we're doing day to day in the classroom to draw our students in and to do the best we can when they're there. I definitely don't share that to say we're not concerned. Of course, we're concerned about the absenteeism, but this year, our interventions have been more focused on how do we make sure we're targeting our students that are maybe kind of questioning when they get out of bed in the morning, maybe there's not a parent home at that time, and it's really cold out, should I go, I have to walk? And so to do that, we've actually, literally as of this week, we're starting to kick off an initiative where there's a bit of a class competition between students. We'll see on our monitors this thermometer of comparison values of attendance rates, just to instill that purpose there is, again, really to target our students that maybe have the support they need, maybe have opportunities to come every day, but the motivation's not quite there. Again, because we know we have students whose challenges are a little bit out of our control. So we're hoping that pushing that kind of middle population of students will be hopeful. And then we use similar check-in, check-out type interventions and strategies. Another thing I will highlight at East, because I'm jealous of West's growth so far, but I feel like we've had a number of personnel changes at East, so we're working with the new associate principal of Student and Family Services, paired with brand-new having an MTSS coordinator in the building. And so that combination of those individuals kind of learning our systems, reviewing our data, we really look forward to having that momentum with new faces to be able to target kind of that tier-three group. So we will do a similar intervention to what West tried at the start of this year going into next school year.
And they do work together, our teams, all three work together. It's not like we came up with all of this, but didn't they just, they just met like Friday? I think I heard it.
Yeah, a new committee for them, yeah.
Over at South, we do a lot of the same things, some of them, I know we do, and some of them, I don't know what we do. But this year, we've been focusing on our tier-one strategies and a sense of belonging in the school, and we feel that that's the connect that's necessary in order to engage our students and have them show up to school. I just want to add that at the state level, we've looked at this because it's a state report card as well, when we looked at chronic absenteeism, we were talking about the readiness of students coming back to school after the pandemic, where they're at, what they see is relevant to them right now in terms of what school looks like. We've talked about some of the areas of the metric, for example, of the five days that are allowed for mental health days, and if schools are not coding them, just, we don't have a sense of how many of those days are reused, how many of them are not being reused, and what does that mean when those are now, could be a part of the math for the chronic absenteeism. We also talked about from some of the. We also talked about, from some of the board members, they had talked about even, even college visitations, and what does that mean? Because a lot of schools have opted to be in session during a lot of the holidays where we have the option to do, and that's what most of the universities are going to have their school visits, and a lot of our, a lot of students will miss at those particular times. It's a, it's a bigger picture item that we were talking about at the state and what it all means, but locally, it's all about, as you're hearing from the three of us, the sense of belonging.
I would also share, we have a communications plan for parents, and we're doing some things through videos and through some written pieces, and then even beyond that, to make sure, sometimes parents are surprised to know that maybe their son or daughter wasn't at school or was late on a consistent basis. Through Infinite Campus, we're working on some things where on a regular basis, they'll get an update. We've got some goals that we're trying to accomplish with that. And so being able to let the parents know where they fit on that grid and where their child is, we think will be helpful as well.
Are we doing that in different languages and trying to make sure that we're reaching some of those families that might?
Yep.
And actually, those videos are student videos. So the folks in them are students. It's not more adults saying, come to school. They know we're going to say, come to school.
We've got some built videos that are targeted for parents, and then we've got some student interns with Dan that are working on individual videos for kids as well. So it's real focus in a lot of different areas.
And just the last, you might remember, Katie would talk about ALOP if she were here. So that's the connection that we're using with North Cook. It's a new program, and so right now, I believe it's still only at East. Or no, did West, did you, I think West did get that this year. So it's South who's left, so we need to bring on.
Jim, did you have something to say?
Yes, I do. Related to the SAT status of reliance and such, I've been seeing and hearing many students and parents also continue still rely on taking them a test of SAT. The cost still, and also because they're taking more than one, and also they have to send their kids to a private institution for studying, upgrading those their scores. So they're sending, parents sending their kids to a specializing SAT private institution as well, from my community and so on. But as you mentioned, 25% rely on SAT scores for those schools, but I'm not seeing that from the parent's perspective or student's perspective because they're underconfident that they're still obligated to take, relying on just taking SAT scores in order to go to better colleges or universities and so on. What do we see that trend or transform that into our situation, would you say?
I would say that the students and the parents are experiencing the social pressure that exists in our country to score high and separate yourself from others. In terms of whether or not the student gets into a quote-unquote "better" school, I think better is very relative. Better, you could say, well, that's Ivy, but at the same time, it's relative to what you want to do. So, you know, no offense, but going to Yale to be a teacher is not something I would recommend, because you'll never make enough money back to pay off those loans being a teacher. So when you talk about better, or it's really about the right fit. Why do parents still see that? Because that's what they remember about school. And so it's very natural for someone to fall back to their memory of when they were in school and what was important, and then say to their children, that is important. The getting help from the outside and going to these special places has existed forever. It existed when I was in high school, it existed when it was the ACT, and now it's the SAT. And, you know, if you're going now for a specific scholarship and maybe you're a point or two away, because parents always ask me this when I was a principal, should I do this or not? Well, it's really depending upon what you're trying to achieve. And so sometimes we'll have folks who do that because they're looking to get a certain score to get a certain scholarship. Others will do it because they want to get as high a score as possible. And does it matter? Sure, it matters in the grand scheme of things, but it is one data point for a student, so.
I'm reading a good book right now, I'll get it for everybody here, but it's called Never Enough, and it talks about this culture, and within certain cultures, it's even more prevalent, where they're chasing, you know, the scores. It's related to the topic previously, which is the chronic absenteeism, absenteeism. At the same time absenteeism started spiking in America, so did the understanding of mental health issues with students. The number-one thing that students, particularly in high-performing schools like the high schools in the Chicago area, where we are valuing students by their test scores, by their grades, by their weighted GPAs, by how many activities they're in and things like that, instead of valuing them that they matter just as a human being. And so the research is really, really clear on that. There are over 200,000 students in America this year who have been admitted to schools that they didn't apply for. So part of the work that we're doing, the whole return on investment piece, is to try to flip the understanding, stop treating higher ed like it's a seller's market and treat it more like it's a buyer's market. People are still asking the wrong questions in the wrong sequence. They ask each other in some communities, where's your child going to school? Where's your child going to school? And we treat that like a status symbol, instead of, why is your child going to school? What is it that they're pursuing? So the world hasn't quite caught up to what we're doing here yet. They will eventually. Economics is going to force it, and you can help, you know, when you, when you have that. I know that's a hard thing for people to wrap their head around, but they're asking the wrong questions, and they're looking at the wrong things for all the wrong reasons. It's tied up to the previous topic. It's tied up to why kids don't feel like they want to come to school anymore. So I think we have to think differently about the whole big topic of this.
Well, you thought that was going to be a short report.
That's okay. What we do, this is important information.
Thank you. Anything else on that? Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much for that. Okay, Ken, any update on FOIA requests?
We had six this month, maybe there's been processed, or they're in the process.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda. Could I have a motion on item seven, A through E?
So.
Second. Jenny, would you take the role? Coyle?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Could I have a motion on item eight? This is the second reading on board policies. So.
Second.
Okay, thank you. George, do you have anything you want to highlight here? I know this is the second reading.
No, I think there's a theme with the employment history review, which is related to faith law. We have been doing that, and I think there's a theme with the new policy, which is five 120 employee ethics code of conduct. That's a brand-new policy.
And remind me again, why did we take out the summer curriculum budget? We just didn't need that, remember?
We removed that because what we were doing summer curriculum, we were actually approving the same thing twice. So when we approve a budget, we set an amount of money for that, then we were coming back and setting up, like, saying, okay, this is the money we're going to spend. So we thought we could take that off.
So it's already covered, okay. Okay, are there any questions on any of those policy changes? Stephanie? Okay, would you take the role? Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Could I have a motion on item nine? This is the 2023 tax law.
So.
Second.
We had a hearing. Do you have anything else you'd like to say?
I think, you know, what you're hearing is the reaction to the assessment information that was presented earlier. I think the general sense is that how can property tax bills for some residents be going up in the 20s and 30% range, and the district's only getting 3.78%? And I think that you're just seeing that, that impact of the assessment changes and the shift that occurred between commercial and residential, getting lower assessments, and residential property getting higher assessments, combined with the impact of senior freezes and all the other exemptions that you have, creating a sense of frustration. And the reality is, we only got 3.78% new money for 2022. The best unexisting property we're going to get for '23 is 5%.
If there.
If there. So the tax caps we are under, when we did the analysis of overall tax bills, School District 207 for the '22 tax bill was among the lowest increases on that tax bill. We just represent a large percent of the tax bill.
But it is, it is overall, it's been quite scary for residents and also for commercial property. Tax rise has been tremendously high compared to previous years. So right now, it could count in taxes, we are seeing for our commercial property taxes for the business property owners. They're also in a hot tax situation, too, because the 2021, the tax has been increased more than 20 somewhat percent. Some, I don't know how true that is, but some has been sharing to me that their tax has been increased 50% compared to previous years. So they don't know it, basically. So it's a really scary, scary thing and situation.
I think that's what bears it.
But we are, yeah, we've been seeing that in residential.
We do have material, we did prepare responses and some information if you do get questions from citizens.
And that's posted on our website as well.
It's on our website, yeah.
We also sent that to our parents as well.
So I haven't received any more personally. I don't know if any other board members have. Okay, anything else? All right, would you take the role? Iker?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Could I have a motion on item 10A?
So.
Second.
Automax is a patching, automated patching system that puts the patches on our servers and computers to keep us safe from viruses. This is a three-year contract. We expanded the number of devices covered from 1,100 to 1,800 so that every device that the district utilizes is covered.
Have we used this before?
We've used it in renewal, we've piloted it, so this is, now we feel comfortable entering into a three-year contract.
So Automax, where are they from, maybe? Again, state?
They're in the cloud. They're in the cloud.
Yeah, they're in the cloud.
It's a security, there's a security issue, don't get me.
This is not, you can't rely on local mom-and-pop operations in this space anymore. Captain for a long time, actually.
Okay. I mean, seriously, do you want, do you want to know where they're located?
Go ahead.
Do you know where?
Because I know, I know that they, they went through a third-party reseller for the system. That third-party reseller is located in New Jersey. I can, in Friday note, put where the headquarters of Automax is.
I hope they're not from some other side of the world or something. I don't know.
Okay. Could you take the role on that, please? Lee?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Could I have a motion on items 10B and C? If that's okay with them together? So.
Okay, so 10B is for photography services. So we spent some time in committee talking about the majority of this is for your senior photos, and this is the senior photo shoot package. So that's why we, when we looked at the companies, we felt more comfortable going with a photography studio to give parents kind of the, the choice to, to buy that package and portfolio. We have worked with HR imaging for a number of years, and they, they do a good job, so we are recommending them. The second is graduation flowers and gifts. Prabani and commencement group are really the two vendors that have been consistently providing us with information. Commencement Group is the company that we currently utilize. The, in talking with the buildings, they like the variety, they like, they feel that they've done a good job and presented value for our families and offer a variety of products. So we are recommending Commencement Group for a three-year contract for our graduation flowers and gifts.
Is our district receiving an annual commission of $5,000 minimum, or is it for total three years per se?
It's per year. And I should point out that all of the commission from both of these contracts, we give to the schools to deposit in their student activity funds to go back into student programming so that students generate these commissions, the commissions go back to provide programming for students.
Okay, thank you, Mary. Jenny, would you take the role on items B and C? Coyle?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Could I have a motion on item 10D?
This is really an agreement, it was a compromise. We, we believe that we had a good point that a two-year contract should not have been entered into. We disputed the validity of that and ultimately came to a settlement agreement, which provides 50% of that second year in the payment, saving us the same amount that we were paying, which is $11,733.30. The agreement has been reviewed by legal counsel.
Okay, any questions on that? This was discussed in finance as well. Okay, would you take the role? Lee?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Could I have a motion on item 12E, Zendesk?
Second.
Zendesk is the ticketing help desk software that the technology department utilizes. It allows for the routing and the tracking of tickets that come into that department. This is a one-year contract. They've upped the number of users from 23 to 26, but Zendesk has been increasing their costs over the last couple of years, so if that continues, we'll probably look at what are available other products, even though we're satisfied with their services.
And this is just a one year?
This is just a one year.
Okay. Any questions on that? Okay, Jenny? Coyle?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Could I have a motion on item 10F, Anthony Roofing from Tech to America for Maine South? So.
Second.
So Anthony Roofing was the low bidder. We had seven bidders attend the pre-bid meeting, five bids received on bid opening. They are substantial, they're about $300,000 less than the budget for this project. They have been thoroughly scope reviewed and committed. While we have not worked with Anthony Roofing in the past, they're a well-known roofing company, they have done numerous projects and shown up to bid on our district numerous times.
Is this what we were waiting for bids to open on?
No, so we, we were waiting on this one, the other one, and part of the condition was at finance, we would only bring it to the board for approval if they were under budget. So tuck pointing was about 1% over budget, so we're going to wait and talk about that at committee, and then approve that in, at the January meeting.
Okay.
For the 1.6 million for the dollars for the roof replacement, would this be considered in our referendum project plan? Has nothing included?
We will be doing, and actually, we did very little roof replacement in the referendum work. Roofing is going to be considered a maintenance item, and we are going to be doing roofs every year from now until we no longer have buildings, because there are multiple sections of roofing at each school. It would be impossible to complete roofing of an entire building in one summer. We generally do sections between 100,000, 50,000 square feet. It is an intensive project. So no, we would not have been able to even, if we contemplated doing roofing, we would not have been able to replace all of our roofing, even in that four-year window.
Okay, any other questions? Jenny, would you take the role, please, on? Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye. Aye.
Could I have a motion on items 11A and B, facility fee waivers? So moved.
Second.
Okay, Dr. Michael, want to summarize this?
Yes, we would appreciate the fee waivers for the Gulf Main Park District. They continue to be a great partners to Main East. Gulf Main District is part of our reunification center. We've really increased our communication with some of the supervisors over there. And naturally, we want to continue to build a bridge between what would be typical center programs to most high schools. We don't have that as much filtering into Main East, but Gulf Main has created some great programming. So the more often we can have those students in our building, we're hoping the more likely our programs are to grow and be successful. And our winter seasons are off to a great start, so...
Sounds great. Any questions on that? Okay, Jenny? Iker?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Could I have a motion on item 12? This is a memorandum of understanding regarding IIT.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Sean?
Yeah, so if you incredibly remember, we approved us to develop and advertise the biotechnical engineering course with IIT. Required by state law is a memorandum of understanding. There's no template necessarily for that, so this will look different than Oakton's, which will look different than St. Francis's. But we need to have that agreement as part of the Tool Credit Quality Act that was passed. So this is a very simple one.
I was just going to say, it's the shortest MOU I've ever seen.
Our longest is with Oakton, our shortest is with IIT.
Any questions on this? Always good to see these things moving forward. Okay, could you take the roll? Iker?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Okay, calendar items, are there any additions or anything that anyone wants to add to the calendar?
Just a quick question on that December 20 special board meeting, 8:15 AM.
Yes, that is what we did, a little poll about to see if we were better before workday, I think, was the...
So this special meeting is for the, I don't know what decision?
To vote on, yes, moving forward on superintendent. Okay, any other additions or...
Is the assumption that that meeting would be pretty quick, since we're just voting?
Yes, I would think so. Yeah, yeah. You know, there's always opportunity for discussion, and, you know, it's an open meeting, so... Is that an open, that's an open meeting, yeah. That's an open meeting, is that an open meeting? Yeah, we will vote in open session. Okay. Any other communications or public comments? There are none. Could I have a motion to go into closed session for purposes of student personnel, review of closed-session minutes, appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, and probable imminent or pending regulations?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Jenny? Coyle?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Okay. Could I have a motion to return to open session?
So moved.
Coyle?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Could I have a motion on items 17, A through, A through E, as a pendant? So moved.
Second.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Could I have a motion on item 19, which is, give me a moment, approval of closed-session minutes from November 6th, November 20th, November 27th,